Roll call. Linda, Dr. Quick will be here. And Mr. Mullis will not be able to join us tonight. Everyone else is present. And our first item of business is approval of items by consensus. Dr. Benton, Doc, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. There are two items on the consent agenda. The approval of the minutes of November 14th, regular session. And warrants payroll 11-7, 11-21, 12-5, sped 06, G406, G407, R210, R211, and then L14, L15, and L16.
I'm trying to think if there's an easier way to do this, but so far I haven't. If we ever, if anyone thinks of a way to come up with something, let us know. I'll accept a motion for the approval of the minutes of November 14th, 2012. Mrs. Bosch?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 14th, 2012, regular session.
And do we have a second? This is Burns. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, warrants. To approve payroll warrants, 11-7, 11-21, and 12-5.
So moved.
Okay. That's a good way to do it, "So Moved." Okay. Second. Second. All those in favor? One, two, three. And two abstain. Myself and Mrs. Cal. Okay. Motion to approve warrants sped 06.
So moved.
Do we have a second? Second. Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Mrs. Bonish, are you?
Oh, sorry.
Four in favor, one abstain. Mrs. Burns?
Correction. It should be two abstain.
Oh, Mrs. Carol. No? No.
No.
No. We'll talk, we had talked about that.
No worries. My mistake. I apologize. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. And our next item, to approve warrants, G406, 407, R210, and R211. Mrs. Bonish.
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Mrs. Carol. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. And a warrants, L14, L15, and L16. Okay, Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Second. Mrs. Bonish. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much. We did it. All right. Our next item for, on our agenda is, oh, tonight, we have a, we're glad to welcome Scarlett Salerno, who is our students' representative from the high school for tonight. She'll be giving us the update on the high school. So, welcome, Scarlett.
Thank you. On sports, winter sports have begun. Boys and girls, winter track, basketball, and wrestling. All winter sports games will start this week. In music, the Strings Attached group had their holiday concert last week. The chorus concert for middle school and high school will be presenting soon. The Wilmington Band Concert is January 10th. There were four fantastic shows of Julius Caesar by the WHS Drama Guild. In clubs, the Medical Careers Club had a field trip to the Wilmington Health Center. They will also be hosting a sing-along hosted in the library next week with senior citizens from the Senior Center. Many classrooms are collecting donations for Toys for Tots, as well as the greeting card fundraiser. The DECA competition will be tomorrow. In the Wildcat Project, Chris Herron came to talk about drug and alcohol abuse to grades nine through 12. And on another note, No Shave November is over, and the male staff have shaved their beards and mustaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Questions or comments? Thank you, Scarlett. It's nice to have you.
Thank you.
You're able to, you don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Feel free. Okay. Our next item of business, old business, is a strategic plan for 2012, 2017. Mrs. Benton?
In your packet is the edited strategic plan based on the input from the last meeting. And I'm hoping that you will vote acceptance of this plan this evening.
Okay. Anyone have any? Everything was? Except for you, all set, Rod?
Yeah, I was also, I just, you know, thank you Superintendent Benton for the oversight there and adding strategy number six under goal one of technology. Appreciate that.
Okay. All right. I move to approve the 2012, 2017 Wilmington Public School Strategic Plan. Do we have a motion? Mr. Hayes?
So moved.
And do we have a second? Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. Thank you. All right. And now, this is our, this is going to be our first perusal of the budget for 2014. It's hard to believe, 2014. And I will turn this over to Superintendent Benton.
Thank you. You and Rod would be one.
We'll be moving. Okay.
Would you like to sit there?
Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge my leadership team that's in the audience. We have high school principal Eric Tracy, OIT director Neil Ellis, sped administrator Mary Hood, pre-K to 12 ELA coordinator Kathy Mackless, pre-K to 12 STEM coordinator Paul Monaco, athletic director Ed Harrison, principal Ferriault, principal Shaw, principal Straznik, principal Appoloni, and head teacher Jen Mahan. And I want to thank them all for being here. They play a vital role in the process of putting this budget together, and I appreciate them giving up in uni with their families to be here. Wilmington's educational vision is built on the belief that our mission is to provide a student-centered education which forces critical inquiry, enabling the individual to be a productive citizen, respectful of selves and others, and capable of adapting to a changing world and its technology. The competition created by global economy, the proliferation of computer technologies, and the growth of decentralized work organizations all increase the need for an educated workforce with higher levels of initial skills and greater ability for thinking analytically and continually learning. Our community prides itself on the value we place on public education. We, as a school system, strive to provide the highest quality educational experience for the children of Wilmington and to ensure that they have everything they need to succeed in the classroom. As we approach the FY14 budget cycle, districts across the country are struggling to find ways to better prepare our children for this ever-flattening global society that defines our world today. As a result of this struggle, it is no surprise that words like innovation and restructuring are now being used to describe what is needed in public education as we approach further into the 21st century. First and foremost, as teachers, our task is not to fill students with facts through a series of rote memorization and regurgitation over the course of 12 years. It is not our place to present historical fact, mathematical equations, or grammatical regulations, ignoring human endeavor and irregularity to meet a standard or confirm to, or conform to a multiple-choice test. Teachers have an obligation to create students of integrity who will enter the adult world as free thinkers. Our students should leave our classrooms better people, willing and able to create real change in the world. Collaboration, technology, and personal reflection must be combined with new methodology and standards-driven curriculum to create a problem-based inquiry-learning environment. Our job is to create thinkers, leaders, and problem solvers. Students must develop critical thinking skills and study skills that take them beyond the classroom. We, as teachers, need to go beyond the concept of student collaboration being constrained by the walls of the schools. Students need to be enabled to collaborate across school districts, across states, and even countries. Students right now are collaborating using Google Docs, communicating using Skype, and learning in real time using technology to create and synthesize information. Education can no longer be linear. Students collaborating with other students from everywhere in the world helps create a classroom where students are encouraged to collaborate and create knowledge that engages them and creates a desire to learn. As I said last year, I think Thomas Armstrong said it best, that a school distance, system's budget is, quote, "the quantification of developing the means and the capacity to facilitate human development with respect for each student's particular style and rate of learning, as well as an appreciation for the varied interests, aspirations, capacities, obstacles, temperaments, and backgrounds that serve as a framework within each child," unquote. Success in the 21st century requires knowing how to learn. Students must develop strong critical thinking and interpersonal communication skills in order to be successful in an increasingly fluid, interconnected, and complex world. Educating Wilmington's children and young people is the most intense activity in which this town engages. We know that 21st century learners must master content while producing, synthesizing, and evaluating information from a wide variety of subjects and sources with an understanding of and respect for diverse cultures. They must demonstrate digital literacy as well as civic responsibility. Virtual tools and open source software create borderless learning territories for students of all ages, anytime and anywhere. Powerful learning of this nature demands well-prepared teachers who draw on advances in cognitive science and are strategically organized in teams in and out of cyberspace. Throughout the past several years, our collective challenge has been to balance the need to provide a high-quality educational experience for every child in this district with limited resources available. To that end, the Wilmington administrators have historically worked extremely hard to support improvement efforts that have been strategic, thoughtful, and realistic. In addition, another challenge is the ability to effectively provide technology for our students and staff. As a community of learners, we need to understand that our children were born in another time, and it is imperative that we educate them with the technology devices that they use every day, 24/7. And while I'm the first one to admit that effective teachers continue to make the greatest difference in the learning outcomes for students, research has confirmed that new technologies have the potential to change the role of the teacher and the student, specifically allowing the learning process to continue well beyond the confines of the classroom. In many countries today, students are referred to as digital natives, and today's educators, such as I, is a digital immigrant. Teachers are working with students whose entire lives have been immersed in the 21st century media culture. Today's students are digital learners. They literally take the world via the filter of computing devices. Cellular phones, handheld gaming devices, PDAs, and laptops, they take everywhere, plus the computers, TVs, and game consoles at home. Many are multitasking, listening to music while surfing the web, or instant messaging friends while playing a video game. We have continued to make significant academic gains in a broadened enrichment experience for our students despite escalating budget constraints. This year, we have managed to provide very low student-to-teacher ratios. With the reduction in grants and the increase in mandatory costs, the challenge of our community and our school district will be to find ways to maintain high-quality services that our residents expect from the town of Wilmington and from the Wilmington Public Schools. As we approach the budget cycle this year, our goal has been to preserve quality teaching and quality educational experiences for our diverse learning population while at the same time being mindful of our current and projected challenging economic realities, including the fiscal cliff. We must continue to invest in robust access to digital tools and curriculum resources along with strengthening educated development in order to ensure the efficacy and success of current projects and those that are on in the horizon. Our FY14 budget priority list includes supporting school committee class-side guidelines, continuing to support 20th century learning initiatives throughout the district, and sustaining the pre-K to 12 technology infrastructure that supports, pre-K, that supports software and hardware replacement. The budget assumptions in putting together this preliminary budget is to continue the current level of services with doing what I call addition by subtraction. So, anything that we add, we had to take something out of the budget in order to replace it. Ensure all legal mandates will be met. Ensure professional staffing guidelines will be met. And continue to identify and plan alternatives that will provide service in the most cost-effective way. Maintain capital assets in order to support the instructional program, protect the physical assets of the town, and ensure the health and safety of our students. Identify ways to reduce the budget if there are insufficient monies available to fund a level service budget, and continue to utilize revolving fund revenues to supplement the town's appropriation to fund the total cost of the school operation. Observe all school committee pupil teacher ratio guidelines. Account for the number and complexity of students requiring special ed services, which continues to increase, and prepare to institute a new educator evaluation system by including funding for training in the budget. What are the budget risks? The uncertainty, uncertainty in Chapter 70 revenues. We still have inadequate funds for equipment replacement. We continue to grow our Wilmington community and have leave-of-absent funds that are difficult to predict. Many expense appropriations have been reduced over the years, and the pupil instructional supply allocations have not been increased for several years. And there's been a reduction of state and federal grant funds. So what will this preliminary budget do? Will maintain staffing levels which will allow the school committee to continue to support advantageous class sizes at all levels. Expand our in-house special ed programs at the intermediate level. Continue to support our very successful full-day kindergarten program. Support the creation of additional advanced placement courses at the high school level. Increase the number of seats for virtual classroom at the high school in order to enroll more students in courses that we do not have the capability of offering at this time. Provide funding so that all juniors will take the PSATs in school in order to prepare our students to further their education. Provide funding for a technician at the new high school in order to run all the mechanical systems. And that may or may not be in our budget, once we meet with the town manager, will decide whether that will go in the town side or our budget. But I wanted to make sure that that was on the horizon. Establish technology integration specialists at all levels to assist staff with developing connections between the classroom and the increased technology that will be available as we move into the next decade. Provide an elementary, middle school special ed coordinator to oversee teachers, support staff, and related services, and be able to evaluate the special ed staff in self-contained classrooms. As you heard a couple of months ago from Mike Gilbert, we have a new educator evaluation system, which is going to be placing increasing demands on all the administrators in the system. And in the budget, I'm trying to put aside funds to make sure that we have enough evaluators in order to do the job right. One of my favorites, provide additional specialist staffing at the primary level in order to create 90-minute uninterrupted literacy blocks for all students and a 30-minute intervention block. Continue the technology initiatives that improve student learning through strong curriculum instructional programs. Continue to meet the new state-replied standards providing services to ELL learners, and continue to support our staff with strong, valuable, and appropriate professional development. As you know, the budget is made up of three components. Chapter 70 state aid, local contributions, and other funding sources. Fiscal 13, we were funded with $10,653,176 from a Chapter 70 allocation. A local contribution was $23,350,005, which brought our net school spending to $34 million, our foundation budget. We also had funding of grants in FY13 of $1,290,551. Our current and projected enrollment does not support the numbers of teachers we presently have. Since 2007, our enrollment has dropped 197 students at the secondary level, and we have not adjusted the staffing to reflect that decrease. Therefore, I'm proposing in this budget reducing staff at the high school by 4.6 FTEs and at the middle school by 4.6 FTEs. In addition, the Shawshin will lose a teacher and the West will gain one. Across town, the same will happen. The Woven Street will lose a teacher and the North will gain one. It is my belief that most of these cuts will be covered by attrition and retirements. And I'll explain why I want to make those cuts when we get to the additions we want to have in the budget. So the request this evening, at this point, is for a salary increase of $749,798. Non-salary increases of $752,525, for a total of $1.5 million. My recommendation is to reduce in, 4.6 FTEs at the high school, an open 0.6 FTE at the high school, 4.6 FTEs at the middle school. Prior to the start of the school year, we did reduce ed assistance at the middle school and a .1 shaved off of an FTE that we did not need. So the total staff reductions proposed is 10.9 FTE. In their place, we are proposing a technology integration specialist at the high school, an additional full-time social worker at the high school, .5 for added supervisor position to deal with the educator evaluation in the English-language arts reading departments, elementary technology specialist. We'd like to bring that position back. As you know, we had it for two years, and the elementary teachers have been craving for that position to return. .4 teacher specialist in order to provide the time at the Shawshin to do the 90-minute literacy blocks. One-to-one aid at Shawshin. We're opening two new programs at the West Intermediate or Reach Program and an Intermediate Pathways Program. And we also need ed assistance for each of those classes. Again, the high school building technician is in our budget. I will know more after Friday whether it will stay in our budget or will go to the town budget. And the sped coordinator for elementary and middle school. That is a total of $484,216. The non-salary changes, sped tuitions are up, sped expenses are down. That's a reduction in psychological services from budget to budget. We had budgeted more than we expended, so we believe we can reduce the budget by $50,000. Increase in our computer lease line item, instructional technology, maintenance and repairs, and curricula. Transportation increase of $105,000 includes $25,000. Hopefully, because our students will not be using the gymnasium and field, and we will be transporting them to other towns as construction takes place at the new high school. Wanted to include that in. The other increase in transportation is, if you recall, we had to go out to bid for a new transportation contract, and it's an $80,000 increase. An increase for textbook replacement, school office department and classroom supplies. And again, these include an increase for the high school phys ed department in order to provide an alternative phys ed program that includes more yoga classes, more interesting activities that can be done in the classroom setting, but provide the students with a good physical education experience. $19,000 increase for maintenance repairs. If you look through the budget, you'd see we need to repair the intercom system at the bout where there's some rooms that don't have an intercom system. We need to put in an air conditioner at the middle school and the computer lab, and those are heftier costs. The Merrimack Fellows, this is a program where we have Merrimack graduate students who are getting their masters, provide ed assistant positions for us, so instead of paying them, we pay Merrimack. And we shaved off $1,199 for a total of $752,525. So the total increase in this preliminary budget is 4.61%. As and true in all school budgets, it represents the district's philosophy in dollars. Many of the programs found within this budget have a long and proud history in the district and have, over the years, helped define the Wilmington Public Schools. The budget attempts to do, to continue to move Wilmington forward. Certainly, our district's interest in the expanded use of technology should be actively encouraged as we educate our children in the 21st century. Finally, I would note that a school budget should be viewed as an investment in the future and not simply as an annual expense. After all, it is our responsibility to provide the children of Wilmington with a quality education. Once again, we remain committed to providing our students with the best possible programming to assure that they are poised to be effective leaders in the 21st century. We continue to review and refine curricula, engage in high-quality professional development, and learn new and innovative ways to address the learning needs of our students. We know that this increase request is much higher than we normally get, and next steps will be to meet with the town manager. Actually, we have a meeting on Friday with the town manager to discuss funding of the operation of the capital budget. We will present the capital budget requests at the next meeting. We have a tiered request from Mr. Ellis. We asked him to order the request. I'm just going to tell you what they are, and I will be handing this out at the next meeting, but purchase and install MIMOs in all the rooms at the middle school. Install five devices in every classroom at the middle school. Replacement of the switches at the middle school. Installation of projectors in the remaining classrooms at the elementary level. Install wireless infrastructure in all remaining schools. Replace the PCs in the North and West Labs. And replace the current aging video system with a modern version at the middle school that is streamed through the projectors in each classroom. Videos converted from WHS. Equipment moved to the library. Replace cameras. So those are our capital project requests. In addition, we're requesting two vans for sped transportation. So we will let you know what the town manager thinks of our request, and we'll come back with a plan on the 23rd. Lastly, I think it's always good to remind the community of all of the unfunded mandates that the Department of Elementary and Secondary puts on your plates. You know, this year, the new educator evaluation system. Now, I understand, although I do not regret us not taking the race to the top funds, but school districts that did take the race to the top funds are using all of those funds to do training because of the complicated process of the new evaluation system. I'm pleased to say that we have been working closely with the WTA to come up with a draft agreement, and we're getting close, and we will be presenting it to you later in the winter. And part of the budget this evening includes training funds, because we're going to need to train all of the administrators and all of the staff in how to do SMART goals, how to do the new evaluation system, and help everybody look at this process as one for continuous improvement. Again, no child left behind in MCAS testing. There's no funding for that. McKinney-Vento homeless students. There was, this year, a, an allotment, but that is not in the budget for next year. And as you know, our homeless funding has gone from a low of $11,000 to a high of $67,000. Unfortunately, last year, this past year, which is what we received reimbursement for, it was only $35,000, and that money does not come to us. It goes back to the town. So there are quite a few federal and state mandates that are unfunded, and it really is putting quite a pressure on local communities to have to complete these mandates and not have funding to do it. We just received another mandate, and Mary Hood and I were talking about it yesterday, a questionnaire that has to go out to all families, and, which is a good thing. But before, the state would pay for the mailing. And so we get this email message yesterday of all the directions of what we have to do. Advertise it in the paper, send out letters to families. But we will not be funding it. A requirement, but they're not funding it. So I'm not, you know, I'm not quite sure what's going on. Last- Lastly, I want to say that I think that it's unfortunate that classroom teachers are being put in the position of having mandate after mandate after mandate being placed upon them. This year especially, I've never seen so many, and I don't think it's fair. And I think it's putting undue pressure and taking the focus off what you hear me say every year, the most important investment you make is the relationship between the teacher and the student. So, with that being said, I'll be glad to take questions and do my best to respond.
First and foremost, I just, I want to say thank you, Mrs. Benton, and to everybody who did. You guys always do a tremendous job. It's a huge undertaking, and we appreciate all the hard work that you put into this. I have a quick question, and I actually have two questions because after what you just asked, what you were just talking about, I just had a quick one. This is, might be a silly question. What ever happens with an unfunded mandate if you are unable to do it?
We get threatened. We have been threatened that they will cut off our grant funding.
Okay.
So, we haven't taken the chance.
Well, just given the economic situation, you know, I'd be surprised, wouldn't be surprised if there are schools that just can't do these things, you know. So, that being said, thank you for answering that. My second question is, one of the things you mentioned was the budgeting, and I'm assuming that's this, the technology integration specialist?
Yes.
Okay. Given everything that's going on with the high school, is that a possibility of even not even being part of the budget for next year? Is this?
Any, the education, the technician you're talking about?
Yes, because you said new high school.
Any community that has building, has built a new high school, every superintendent has recommended to me to get the technician on before you even put a shovel in the ground because all of the mechanics are computerized, and that person really needs to be on board now in order to be part of the planning of the specs and what's purchased for the schools.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
I'm sorry, I was going to ask the same question I was about to ask.
Oh, okay. Okay, Mr. Hayes.
Great. Earlier this afternoon, I asked via email, Mr. Roggerio about 30 questions. So, I think, and I'm satisfied with my answers, and I appreciate that. And so, I don't really have too much to say tonight. Want to thank Superintendent Ben and Mr. Roggerio and your leadership team for putting together a fantastic budget. I do have a couple of questions about the process. I know that you're meeting with Mr. Hull, Town Manager Hull, on Friday. Is there anything the school committee can do between now and Friday to bolster our case, or would you rather us take more of a hands-off approach and you?
We've already had a preliminary meeting with Jeff, and I'd like to try and give it our best and see what we can come back with. I mean, I anticipate that we will have a reduction.
Sure, sure.
I'm hoping that we come in around 3, 3 and 1/2, and that we can handle.
Sure. What was also fantastic, and it wasn't included in the budget materials that we had in the packet, but you had read off the list of all the wish lists there that Mr. Ellis has regarding the, you know, technological improvements across the district, and that was just fantastic. Those are things that sort of, you know, I've looked at and really wish, you know, we do accomplish within the next three to five years, so, and certainly the sooner the better. So, if we can fund those right away, that would be wonderful. And whether it's through the budget or it sounds like through town meeting, you know, articles, that's fantastic. And the other thing I would ask is, you know, at what point does the public get involved in the process? And, you know, if someone watching at home has a question about the budget or wants to see the budget, or how would they go about doing that?
We will put the presentation up online in the next couple of weeks. We, once we have agreed upon an amount, we'll be coming back to 23rd to present. We do, we'll do a public hearing, which is required by law for the public to have input. In the meantime, all they have to do is press the Ask the Superintendent button on the website, and I will be glad to respond.
Great.
And...
Well, thank you very much, and again, just a fantastic job. That, for me, is my favorite presentation of the year, and I just hope we can get as close to that, you know, like you said, you know, we'd be, 3 or 3 and 1/2 percent increase would be wonderful, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question on the social worker for the high school. What are the unique qualities that, I know other schools do have social workers, what are the unique qualities that are in, with the social workers that we need that?
Can I ask, invite Mr. Tracy up to the table?
Sure, definitely.
Mary Hood, and Mary Hood to talk about it. You were all at the drug abuse prevention forum a week ago. What you're about to hear is, we have students in the middle school and high school who come to us with many social or emotional issues, students that are not in school. And Mr. Tracy, I know for the past month, has been spending many hours actually, you know, finding students who haven't come to school, responding to friends' accounts of a student who's texting them that they're going to hurt themselves and literally going to houses with Officer Gillis. So, that being said, I think I set the stage for what the qualities are for a social worker.
And I think they're twofold. I think that one of the areas of weakness at the high school is the ability to address those specific needs, that those emotional needs and the, even the social needs, the coming to school. We have a higher, a greater increase in number of kids who are having social issues related to school phobia, related to the psychosocial issues hurting themselves or wanting to hurt themselves, or just as Mrs. Benton has said, just in two weeks, I have been, had three different local residences trying to coax kids to school, help kids get to a program, find connections for parents, and parents, I think, will benefit from a position like this more than anybody because they oftentimes find themselves wondering what to do in those situations when they're wrestling at home with the, all of the things that we do, you know, that we wrestle with, there's families in our households, and then on top of that, the social and emotional issues of, you know, 14, 15, 16-year-olds who are, you know, not wanting to come to school, you know, depressed. We've seen a huge increase in the past two years. Right now, you may know, we have a .5 social worker that works specifically with the alternative program, with the social-emotional kids and in school, working in groups and trying to connect to parents and families and trying to bring all of the opportunities that the regular ed kids have into those programs without kind of bringing it up, excuse me, too quickly or reaching out to parents and allowing them the opportunity to find some connections either with outside agencies or within the school building, you know, assistance with meetings, assistance with finding counselors, assistance with just getting to programs, assistance with, even today I had, you know, to work with a family on self-reporting to DCF for assistance. They need help. So, this is, I think, an extremely important addition to the high school, to be able to help bring those kids along and reach out to the families and give them another point of contact for the schools. I think that's, they do feel comfortable coming to us and working with us. We just don't have the expertise within the facility to give them enough help.
I just wanted to add something. One of the problems is, what once was a role of our guidance counselors is no longer a role of the guidance counselors because they now are totally focused on college placement and, and that's the change. You know, guidance counselors today spend 99% of their time on, focused on careers, and we need someone to focus on the social-emotional. Can Mary just add?
Yes. I was just going to add that, given the, these are the students who are high at risk of going out of district, it's also much less restrictive to provide more support in the high school to keep them in district and coming to school. It's very difficult for them to get to school every day, and having someone who can do some of that outreach today and their family helps keep them in our system instead of being out of district, which is important.
And what I was going to ask, I have a social worker in my family, and I've always thought that we should have social workers in the high school. But my other question is, who would be, who would this person be reporting to? It sounds like not the guidance, but to the two of you or to the principal of the school? Or what would be the chain of command for that person?
I would think it would report to the principal, to the administration, just because of the confidentiality of that position and the interactions they have with families.
Right.
I think that's important to preserve.
Dr. Quick, my question is, has there been, you know, given, what concerns me is the explosion, like you said, this massive increase over the last two years. I mean, has there been any research done as to why this is occurring? Are other towns having the same problems that we are? And has there been any, you know, we definitely, I agree, that having the social worker is an important piece of that, but I think we also would want to get to the problem as to what, is it the pressures of school? Is it, you know, besides the home? I'm just trying to find out if there's any, if there has been any, you know, evidence of what's creating this explosion of the depression, et cetera.
I think, I think you can, you can take a couple steps back, maybe two, three years ago, economically. The economy has put a huge dent into some families where one, if not both families, both parents are unemployed. We have a huge increase in the number of families in situations of separation and divorce. As you know, if that happens, the older the kids are, the, usually the more dramatic the impact, sending kids off kind of in a tizzy and into that faster direction towards dealing with depression, issues of depression and isolation and trying to figure out a direction. I think a lot of that is what we're seeing is coming up through. We've been kind of watching it grow a little bit through the middle school, and I've had conversations with Mrs. McMiniman about, you know, how things have been increasing and progressing, and now we're seeing it at both levels, and I think we spend, and our people in place now, the guidance counselors, our school social workers that we have, the school psychologists are, you know, all of a sudden being pulled in all these different directions, trying to, trying to hold these families together.
And just, I'm sorry, just a second part of the question. Is this happening, high achievers as well as it is on the, you know, the lower side or?
Absolutely.
It's across.
It's across everywhere.
I'd also add that classroom teachers have that added to their plate because they're dealing with it as well. And, I mean, the increase in the amount of students with anxiety is another piece that we're really seeing a lot of.
Okay, thank you.
Just hopefully, with the homework and the stress, that subcommittee, there are two subcommittees that will be very helpful to us. Does she say, Mr. Hayes?
I do have, now I'm getting going, you know, now, now all these things are coming some into my head. And I do have a question. At the very end of the budget, Superintendent Ben included, I think, 50 or so facility repair and improvement requests. Now, and some of these just break my heart. I mean, some of the, Mr. Shaw, Principal Shaw wrote, "Please remove the locking mechanisms on all student lockers. They are becoming increasingly difficult to operate and cause undue anxiety among the children when they become stuck." I feel for them. And there's, you know, bathroom, kitchen, hallway, tiles, roof, walls, on and on and on, outlets. And I guess, so, how does this work? Because we're really beholden to the town, is that correct?
We will be also meeting with George Hooper and Jamie to review the list. Jeff already has it and prioritize it and hopefully be able to check a lot of the items off, and we'll come back with you. We're working on presenting, getting George Hooper over here to present the facilities plan.
The facilities plan, yeah.
And, but, we're trying to do our best, but yes, we are beholden.
Right, right. All right, well, thanks for that, okay.
Anyone else?
One of the things that I'm concerned about and have been since this came about is the education, the educator evaluation that's occurring. And at our conference, we had one discussion where a community had brought in two people to be, to be working on this. And as a teacher, a former teacher, my hackles went up because I felt, here's somebody from who knows nothing walks in the door here and is going to be in charge of evaluating us. So, I really hope that when we are talking about this, this supervisor position to deal with educator evaluation, it's more of a, maybe a paperwork or be able to help them to put it all together, but that that person would not actually be coming from somewhere, nobody knows the person, and be evaluating our teachers. I would have to be opposed to that. I'm not opposed to having another position, but I'm wondering, is there some way, this has been the major thing this year, it looks like it's going to be a major topic next year, how is this helping our students? I don't see it, but we already have an evaluation system and, fine, do you, do you in your mind honestly think, oh, I should not go and give my test field in mind, I'll cut it off there. But I will say that I hope that when we as a community are working on this, and I really know the superintendent Benton, and I usually in the end think alike, that we are doing this in such a way that it doesn't consume us and become the all-consuming thing of our school system. We've got to put it back there where it belongs and go forward with that it's a positive thing, we're looking for favorable results, we are expecting favorable results because we have wonderful teaching staff and administrative staff, and so, why would we be thinking that anything else, we'd have less than that? So, that's just my feeling in that one position. I hope we're kind of careful about how we're going to use that position.
Yes. Mrs. Benton?
After going through the course, which was actually really enlightening, I do feel too, it's, although I think it's a positive thing, I think, I can't help but feel it's a bit of a micromanaging of Big Brother, which unless it's been pointed out that the information the state's not getting isn't sufficient, I just find it another bit of an extreme piece in that process. And I'm hoping that we can give ourselves enough time to learn the ropes and the paperwork that this is going to entail because it's going to be, it's going to be all, nothing but more paperwork, huge paperwork, that we can get ourselves in a good spot so when we are now responsible to reporting it, we, you know, our questions and we've worked out the kinks in it before we have to go live with it.
What I really believe is going to be crucial to all of this is trust. Trust, together, teachers and principals, principals, superintendents, superintendents in school committee, respect for each as professionals, that, you know, this is not a gotcha, this is not a trying to find fault, but work together. I think we need to support each other and understand each person's role in the process because that is the only way we can get something out of it. I'm glad you mentioned, Mrs. Kane, the evaluation system we have now. I think any of the teachers or principals who've been involved in the new independent projects would tell you that we have had some fabulous, fabulous work and seen such incredible professional growth in teachers because of giving them the opportunity to identify where they wanted to, what they wanted to concentrate in, and our students are benefiting from it. So, I'm hoping that with this new tool, we can still utilize the best of what we spent, well, while I've been here, I think, Joe, what was it, four years, three or four years creating? It's a wonderful system, so let's hope we can utilize a lot of it.
Me too, thank you. Any other questions upcoming? Thank you, oh, yes.
I just want to make one final comment. As you know, our business manager's not here this evening, and I'm sorry that he couldn't be here. This work could not get done if it were not for all of the hours and hours and hours that Paul Roggero puts into the budget process. He is my right hand, he is my left hand. We spend many hours together developing the budget even before we, before September. He starts on the budget July 1st and really holds, I think everybody in the audience would agree, holds us all accountable for every penny. And I'm sorry he can't be here this evening to acknowledge the, all of your nice favorable comments, and I will reiterate those to Paul, but I just wanted to publicly thank him for his work.
And we can repeat them on the 23rd?
Yes.
Because we'll be glad to do that.
Because we'll be glad to do that.
And I forgot to mention, for the public's sake, Ms. McMiniman is ill today, so that's why she's not here.
Okay, thank you. Sounds, all right, that was excellent, thank you so much. Do we have any public comments? No, okay. Other reports, subcommittee reports, I don't have, no?
Believe it or not.
No?
Just real quickly, the special education parent advisory councils meeting tomorrow night, so that would be Thursday, December 13th, thank you, at 6:30 in the high school library. It is a business meeting, though, it's not a workshop, but I did want to alert the board to that, and then the high school building committee, which, you know, Superintendent Ben does all the updating there, but just so the public knows, it was originally scheduled for tomorrow night, it's been postponed till next Thursday, December 20th, at 6:30 in Town Hall, Room 9.
And just remind me, because Mrs. Burns had asked me for an update, I will be able to give you a better update next week. As you know, there was an appeal to Superior Court, and we will be better able to tell you the calendar of schedule of how, you know, what the process will be after next week's meeting, so I will make sure that you all get emailed on that, and you're welcome to come to the meeting.
The 20th?
20th.
20th. Thank you. Thank you. Any correspondence? No, thank you. I'd just like to mention one thing on top of that, do we all get the blog from the Mass Association of School Communities? Do you all get it? Because what they're talking about right now is subcommittees, so at some point, we might have a discussion on that, might bring someone forward, but very interesting, up-to-date topics that they're talking about, so. Is it on your website? It's on the website. You go through Mike Gilbert, get on through Mike Gilbert? Call him, that would be great. All right, our next meeting is going to be January 9th, and if you have any comments or agenda items, feel free to get them to us. And everybody, have a wonderful holiday season, and we'll see you again in January, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Hayes?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Quick. Hallows in favor. Good night to all of you. Thank you so much for everything you do for us.